Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of May 20th. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda be accepted as written.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Also, Mr. Chairman, we have two requests for continuance that came in during the day today. It's for items F2 and H2, both requesting that the matter be continued at least one meeting.
F2 and H2?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that F2 and H2 be continued. Will that be to the next meeting by the applicants? Okay.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, just in case there's someone waiting to speak on those things, the F2 had to do with the petition of Andrew Tiska, and H2 had to do with the petition of Donna, uh...
Castro.
Castro, yes, sorry. She's gonna kill me because she, I know her. Yeah, those two were the items. The next is submissions of minutes of previous meetings, items A1 through 5.
Make a motion, minutes be approved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the first item under ordinances. This is the first reading for ordinance 2015-7. This basically allows for a change of the council docket deadline to Wednesday, prior to the Wednesday prior.
The clerk and I have been speaking about this for a little while, and what this, the long story short on what this ordinance helps do is cut down on late items to the council. The benefit of that to everyone involved is that when we're looking at a particular item, that we have all the information that we need to make an informed decision. It also, hopefully, will open up a little bit of time for department heads when their input is necessary for particular items. And Lou, if you could speak to just the timeline so everyone understands what is being proposed here and what it is right now and what it's going to change to or propose to change to.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the primary deadline for the regular agenda items is on the Friday prior to the meeting to close at noon. What we're suggesting is that instead of that, we're going to move it up about a day and a half to Wednesday at 4:00 p.m., which would allow for a little bit more time for the agenda items to be able to be kind of vetted through the process. Obviously, there's always opportunity for, you know, extraordinary circumstances and whatnot, but this also is pretty much in conformance with what other communities do. Most have about a week's worth of closing time. Just so that everyone kind of realizes, we have an agenda that closes at noon on Friday, and then we're expected to deliver it to the council at 4:00 on Friday. So there's not a lot of time in between, and there are some individuals who shall remain nameless, who forever sort of skirt that agenda deadline, and they think because they call you up at 5:00 minutes at 12:00 saying, "I'm gonna bring something in this afternoon," that it satisfies it. Obviously, we accommodate that, but it doesn't make for a happy work environment. So I think this will be a good improvement, and it should improve the quality of the document that you end up getting.
Spectacular.
I also think that if we agree to this, which makes a lot of sense, that it's somewhat of a trial period, and if we end up not liking it, we can come back on the matter.
Absolutely.
All well within your powers.
Can I ask why this is, I'm surprised to see that this was, is an ordinance. Can this be just an administrative ruling or procedure, Mike, that if we wanted to change it, I mean, that we would be able to do that?
Well, it's an amendment to an existing ordinance.
No, I understand, but I mean this whole...
You could certainly amend the ordinance to make it an administrative procedure.
Right. I just was surprised this was in, like, as an...
It's actually an ordinance.
I...
I think you're missing my point. I'm asking you, could it, why does it need to be an ordinance?
No, it does not have...
Or could it be a procedure and a rule that we would have so that it would be easier to provide us with more flexibility without the cost of having to change an ordinance? Not that we do it often, but...
Well, we'd have to repeal this ordinance, I guess, if we...
Right, I understand. I'm just asking, like, um...
I guess my question, if it wasn't an ordinance, what would be the procedure going forward if there was a change under our...
It would just be under your Town Council rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations, okay. I mean, I see the need, and if it accommodates and serves all parties involved with all of us in government, because it's important, and I'll speak on behalf of myself, and I think my colleagues have stated this before, is sometimes when late items come in, and there are circumstances, like the clerk said, that's, you know, understandable, but, you know, sometimes when it's vast information, you know, we try to always say that we want to make solutions for the residents while they're here and make their time valuable so they don't have to come back. But sometimes when late items come to us, I know that I can't make a just decision in just the last minute when I read it, you know, before a meeting. And it's not by high numbers, it's just, I think this will meet the needs to give us the information and make it more accountable and comfortable for all the parties involved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this constitutes the first reading of ordinance 15-7 to change the council docket deadline to Wednesday.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The next item is ordinance 2015-08, and you may recall there was a discussion a while back about drain layers licenses, and what has happened is that the state has taken over that responsibility, and they now license all drain layers. So we no longer have the ability to do that. And this series of amendments as proposed essentially just removes anything that had to do with the issuance and maintenance of that particular license. That's all, there's four or five places where it shows up in the town code, and we sort of grouped it all into one ordinance change.
You see on line 3 on this ordinance that it says all renewals of town granted licenses, for example, play pool licenses, cesspool licenses, Sunday sales licenses, victaling licenses. That actually is not a change from the current ordinance. I asked Lou about this earlier today, and the point is to say that the current state of affairs won't change. All of these things will continue to be in front of us. The words on line 3 are 30-plus years, 20-plus years old, however, it's been there a long time, so...
While we're looking at this, are there, I looked at this list, are there any other items that could go the same route? For example, Sunday sales licenses, if they're allowed by, if the business already has a license and the industry, like liquor, is allowed by the state, do we need to give them a Sunday sales license? Or that, could that be put into, like, administrative procedure?
The answer is yes. Okay, it certainly could be administrative, but when the chairman and I had a discussion about it earlier, it's one of those things that, licenses is kind of a sensitive thing, okay? And pers, even though that, there was an ability there to become, have it be administrative for many, many years, it was never exercised that way because it's, I prefer, and the previous clerk for 20 years preferred, that the council be directly involved. That doesn't mean that it can't possibly go to a consent agenda type thing in order to make it a little bit, a little bit more administrative, but I think it's nice to let the public at large know that this is happening because they are able to view the agenda. If, as soon as it becomes administrative, then it kind of loses that contact. And it also gives people the opportunity to come forward, and even if there've been no, no issues with the police or the fire department or anything like that, that would normally weigh in on these things. If an individual has an issue with a license, then that's their opportunity to know that it's going to happen because it's on the council agenda.
So have we ever said no to a Sunday sales license for a business that is legally authorized to provide Sunday sales?
Well, there's really only, there's only the four or five liquor stores now anyway, and I would say probably not, but I still think it's something that, that's all done at the same time that you issue the liquor licenses anyway. And I don't think you don't want to have those public hearings.
No, no.
You know, so it's really, it's kind of immaterial. The Sunday sales license used to be a lot broader, now it isn't.
Okay, so it's only that group?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest one addition to this proposal. I think it makes a lot of sense to streamline things, but I also think that it's important that the council have an opportunity to deal with these number three items, and what would you think of adding to the number three? Something to this effect, subject to any objection of a council member, in which case the matter will be referred to the council as a whole. What I'm thinking is that supposing a council member has a sense that one of these licenses is not a good idea, I would hate to have the issue be automatically shut out and not addressed. I don't think this would happen often, and obviously, we don't want to empower a single council member to veto it, but I think there should be a mechanism where a single council member could forestall it until the council body as a whole could act upon it.
But that would be more like, I think, a consent agenda than administratively handled because then there wouldn't be any way for it to go on the docket anyway.
Well, it's interesting that we have this conversation because actual process is contrary to line 3.
Yes.
Which is, what we currently do is talk through each one of these things. So if this council would like to see this changed, for example, Halsey suggested with an objection, that it would become forefront as it currently is, which is, again, interesting is that we go contrary to what line 3 says, so maybe we should fix line 3 so it follows suit with what we currently do. Or the amendment that Halsey is suggesting that would allow any objection to be dealt with.
If you were going to have this conform totally with practice, then you'd put a line through the whole thing? Because, basically, because it doesn't work that way. You know that you react to all of the renewals.
We absolutely do.
Okay, and personally, I prefer it that way. The only possible saving grace in this is that it would allow me to deal with an emergency. Okay, if someone filed their paperwork improperly or out of hours or something that it didn't quite meet the agenda, there would be the ability to have them continue and not be closed down. Okay? Otherwise, as you, it's been my practice for 11 years and the practice 20 years prior to that by the previous clerk, is that all licenses came before the council for approval, either new or, or renewals.
I agree with that, and also, even if this, my colleagues want to go the route of consent agenda, I think the town clerk made a valid point that it might be someone or resident of the town that just would like to give an opinion. I don't think it takes a lot of time when we have the proper information in front of us to pass these motions for these licenses unless there's objection or a voice of an opinion, but I just, myself, feel that it should constitute to have the audience or the residents, if they have to voice their opinion, by seeing it and have a say in it, so, even though we have the final judgment.
But I believe the chairman, this was the chairman's initiative, I believe, that talked about putting it just as administrative?
No, actually, no.
Wasn't it?
No.
It was someone on this town.
No, it's actually, as Lou said, it's the opposite.
This, all of these things that, for example, Sunday sales license, victaling, peddler's licenses, detective licenses, motion picker, picture license, entertainment licenses, can be processed or shall be processed by the council clerk on behalf of the Town Council. So I guess really what it comes down to is, what we currently do right now is contrary to line 3. If we choose as this council that we want to strike line 3, we can just, and this is first reading, we can have a change, so second reading is a strike, stricken. The only negative to that is if Lou needed these powers for a last-minute emergency. And how often does that happen, Lou?
Occasionally.
Okay.
I thought this was to streamline, I mean, I don't have a problem going individually like we did, and if you wanted to correct that, then it shall be, you know, agreed upon by the Town Council, I mean, or put before the Town Council. I mean, if that would, that cleans that part up over there, I mean, I thought somebody wanted, I thought this came about as somebody wanting to, you know, just get some of these things that we have.
No, it was only to kill the drain layers thing. That's the only reason why it's...
State requirement.
It's the drain layers thing that we have no power over at all.
Yeah, that has to...
And to tell you the truth, if I had, if I had really noticed this, I probably would have suggested we don't put this line in because I had a feeling it was going to cause this discussion.
Well, it's fair enough.
But, and that's really, that's the only reason why it's before you is because that...
Right, you wanted to take the drain, okay, go ahead.
We have to take the drain layers out because we have no power over that anymore whatsoever.
Right, and you wanted to do that administratively.
No, I don't do anything with it.
No, Mary, that's because the state now mandates those and...
The council has no, no longer has the power to issue those licenses.
Right.
The state took that power over, and now they're issued the same way the contractor's licenses are issued, so...
Well, Mary brings up a good point, though. Since we're going through these changes with ordinances tonight, whether it be one of us, the administrator, the clerk, or the solicitor that comes up with a first reading of ordinance, maybe we could be supplemented, who's the one who's, you know, making this request for the ordinance, what may be just a paragraph summary and what's entailed of why and your concerns, why you want to make those changes. Maybe that will consolve some things, too.
So some back knowledge, if you will?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that makes a whole lot of sense, but in regards to this, what's this council's pleasure? Are you, do you want to strike this? And obviously, we're going to constitute first reading, we could strike this for second reading, or we can leave it in, or we can make an adjustment. To me, it sounds like everybody would like to strike it, but what's your pleasure?
Well, I, I'm going to make a motion that this constitutes the first reading because it's a first reading, and if my colleagues or anyone in the administration field, there's any changes, we can go forth and do those and accommodate it that way. And think about it more.
Well, based on the state requirement, I'll definitely second that motion.
Okay, but just, and that makes sense to me, but what we want is, in three weeks, we'd like to have an ordinance that is proposed, that is what we're looking for, so we can pass it in the second reading. So if, in fact, if, I personally am fine with striking line 3 because it follows suit to what we exactly do right now, so... But if, if there's otherwise, anybody have any other comments on this one?
It's doing what we're already doing. My question was section 13-186 on the second page. Rules and regulations set forth by the town relating to, and then everything is crossed out, but I would imagine that pertains to other ordinances on our books that protects us because, like you said, Lou, we're going through the normal process as it is, so even though they're acquiring the state license on our end for our liability purposes, they will be insured, bonded, and all the necessary documentation when they're doing work in our town accordingly?
See, that, again, is going to be a part of the state license. I mean, right now, you know, I can't imagine that we're going to be, like, examining all these documents when they come in with a valid license. It's kind of like somebody coming in with their driver's license and you want to see a copy of their road test. You know, I mean, they have to meet whatever those criteria are that the state has established. It's probably more stringent than what we have.
Right, but I can add a little bit on Eddie's question. Like, for instance, if we require a bond before you open up a road so we know that it's going to get repaired, those are the types of rules and regulations that 186 refers to. Those will stay in place.
Okay, just looking out for us, you know...
That's why we want to keep that in there, yes.
Well, while we're doing this, I mean, you gentlemen should determine whether or not you want to make any changes to section 3 in, you know, the first part. I mean, if it's practice, like, if Lou wants to maintain that it's processed by the clerk just in case of emergency, then that's fine, we can leave it as it is and take drain layers out. Or if we feel that it's going to come before the council unless there is an emergency, then you need to, maybe you can correct that language just so that it comes back and we don't have this discussion.
Sure.
I mean, either way, it's fine.
Yeah, we'll work, we'll work on it and have something for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Great.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, is item C3. This is ordinance 2015-09, and this is a, an ordinance amendment that comes from the Department of Community Development. I believe it has to do with just the description of the vehicles as they are described in the ordinance.
I can add to that. Ray Falco has brought to our attention that 90% or more of the vehicles on our streets are more than one and a half tons, and that the reality is, they are really at this vehicle gross weight of seven tons. It should be the cutoff because the, his problem was, he'd be issuing tickets for every vehicle in town. And this is just the case with our ordinance catching up at the 21st century.
Bring it out to the times. Yeah, makes sense.
Isn't seven tons a very heavy vehicle? Yeah, that's apparent what the standard is. Maybe the deputy chief is. I think that came from the police department, too.
Heavy commercial vehicle.
Well, that's a huge vehicle, isn't it? I mean, I don't think there are many vehicles that weigh seven tons.
It would be like, anything over a five-ton dump truck would be seven ton.
So all 18-wheelers would fall into this category?
Yes, yes. Yeah, average passenger car is two tons, less than two tons.
Two and a half, yeah, something like that.
Four thousand pounds, so...
Yeah, yeah.
But the problem...
What would go up to seven tons, though? This would cap it at seven tons.
So you're talking 14,000 pounds?
Right.
And that could be a box truck, could be a trailer, and I have to agree, you know, that if we can have some clarity of maybe a happy medium, because that's fine if we're, you know, ticketing people, but we have off-street parking, there's other concerns with this change going up to seven tons. And my concern is, are we opening the door to say, hey, let's get more seven-ton, you know, trucks overnight when people have off-street parking while they're sleeping? Because we're contented with that issue, and also, it could be a zoning issue that we have to answer on that level, but more importantly, maybe we're going to get complaints on this where people, you know, if they have the right to park, fine, but if it's going to be a big box truck, I know you're going to get complaints from people in their suburban neighborhood or even downtown to say, I got this box truck every night in front of my house, you know, it, you know, has my view every time I leave in the morning, you know? These are the questions that I'm just concerned about before we can clarify this.
How about this? How about if we get clarity on the actual weight? The way it reads right now is weight rating of seven tons or more, so a six-ton vehicle is okay to leave out at night, right? So maybe we can get some clarity and find out, what does this kind of encompass? Does this hit the parameters that we were looking to do? Is it, or does this address the issues?
I believe that's what was brought forth to Ray Falco. The issue was, there are nowadays, a one-ton pickup truck, which is used for residential purposes, would have been excluded from parking in a residential area, so we're trying to eliminate that. Where he came up with the seven tons, I'm not sure exactly, but we brought it to his attention, and then he...
So why don't I do this? Let me follow up with Ray.
Thank you.
We can always change that number, and we'll do a little memo on it, what it covers, what it doesn't. Maybe, maybe it's going to go down to five, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
One other detail, Mike. This, of course, would have exception when the town administrator needs to declare a parking ban for... That's always the case for emergencies. Is that understood, or should that be stated? Now, that's elsewhere, the, under the powers, you know, during snow removal or emergencies, the administrator, as the director of Public Health and Safety, can issue those... So that's already taken care of? Already taken care of. Good question, though.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The other issue is, I'm not sure how it was drafted, but if it was gross vehicle weight, that's the vehicle with the cargo, so maybe that's where the seven-ton comes from.
Right, it is gross vehicle weight.
Okay, then that, that makes sense. So it would be like a, a regular standard, one-ton pickup, and then you, once you have it fully loaded, then it may be up to seven tons.
See, I think all of us agree what this is trying to attain, and that's a great point, thank you. Right now, the old ordinance, or the current ordinance, is 2,000 pounds, which every single car in, on the road weighs at least 2,000 pounds. Everybody's illegal right now, so we need to change that, and obviously, this is going to fix that. We just wanted to make sure that if the seven tons hits, is achieving the goal that was trying to be attained.
We'll prepare memo for you, so when you get to second reading, you'll know.
Perfect, thank you.
I would just ask me, I mean, just a point, perhaps there's like an exception if somebody was, like, on occasion. I haven't seen it in a very long time. I think there was someone who had, like, family member that had a big, like, 18-wheeler, and they would park, like, you know, the downtown area, but it was only on occasions that they might have been passing through. Like, could they come and get some sort of a something if that was the case? I'm not sure if it's a good idea or bad idea, I'm just raising that point, because I don't think anybody wants an 18-wheeler parked in front of their house on a regular basis, but I don't know if there's ever any, like, just a remedy in case there was some situation where, you know, I usually park it at, the guy usually parks it at wherever, and that place is, got something going on for a short period of time.
Something to look into? That's a great point.
I can address that briefly. There has been a couple occasions where we've had some large vehicles, and what I do is, I refer them to the police department, you know, and we accommodate that. But it has been very rare, but whenever it has happened, exactly what you're saying, it's someone in passing, or it's just a special circumstance, you know, and we, we've accommodated for that.
Perfect. Could I have a motion for first reading, then?
Make a motion, this constitutes the first reading, ordinance number 2015-9. Second?
There's a motion and a second, and any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the next item is item D1. This is the petition of Amy Hodge doing business as Phantom Fireworks for premises located at 1282 Hope Street, requests council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have a recommendation provided by the town administrator, chief of police, and a late item recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief.
Chief Martin, I noticed on your recommendation that it says that the, they are now, or I should say, they now comply with R.I. fire code. Was there a concern prior to that, or they, they were always up to speed?
The location, I think it's 261 Wood Street.
Yeah.
That was a new location for them. We went and inspected the building, and they had to make some modifications in order to make it acceptable to sale of fireworks. And also, any place that sells fireworks, we make random visits between the start and the end of the port to do that sort of thing. They did come into compliance at 261 Wood Street. The one located on Hope Street has sold before, but again, we go in when they decide to put product in to make sure the product, the amount of product is valid and that there are no, what they refer to as lucies going in there, you know? You can't sell it other than a sealed package type of stuff.
Chief, is there any possible problem in the future that some establishment will accumulate an undesirably dangerous large quantity of fireworks? Seems to me you ought to be ready to veto a too large of an enlargement.
We do, I believe, I can't be, I absolutely be certain right off the top of my head, but I believe it's, you can only hold inside the store 250 pounds of the product, I think foods all packaging. Anything in excess of that is stored in a separate container outside the building. That's why we look at it relative to when we go into the stores that are selling, proper spacing, extinguishers, and all the various things that are levied on us by the state fire marshal.
Does the ordinance preclude smoking in the establishment?
That's correct, absolutely.
So Chief, why do that we see these when they're going to do like a, kind of like a pop-up business for this particular, you know, holiday, but we don't have any regulation that I, that I know of over, you know, the other stores, like the box store, CVS, Stop and Shop, they all sell them?
That's correct, and we are, we go in there and we give them the state law, which is what applies. The town has nothing relative to an ordinance to the selling of...
But you're still monitoring those buildings, those businesses?
Absolutely. We go into each of them, Stop and Shop, CVS's, the little milk stores that try to put it in there, we validate how much they have stored in the back room, where it's located in the store, and the CVS Stop and Shop, they have somebody observing it all the time.
So, I'm not one for overregulation, but you mentioned we don't have an ordinance. Is there, is that a need that should be filled?
I don't believe so. I believe the state is the one that levied this about, I guess the deputy was about four years ago.
Yeah.
years ago.
Yes.
The state all of a sudden said you can have fireworks now?
Yes.
There's nothing in towns that can stop it.
Okay.
Bristol's big benefit, in my opinion, is we have one ordinance that says you cannot sell anything out of a tent, because many places throughout the state today, they throw the tent up on the corner and they're chucking out the fireworks, so.
Mm-hmm.
We, we don't allow any of that.
Is it standard procedure, the ones that fall under our umbrella, if they're not selling, if they sell outside the Rhode Island code when you do your pop-up visits, that they get their license removed and shut down immediately? Versus, like you said, the others are under the state, so even if you did do that pop-up visit, and I'm sure they wouldn't, that they are complying with the state, but I'm just saying, if, if that was the case of the large fireworks, if they try to get away with it...
We, we invite the state marshal and the police department. Police department usually goes with us.
Okay.
It's a team, and anything we find illegal, it's confiscated and returned over to the state.
Okay.
That's why...
If it's anything large and we get information about it, what we'll do is we send in undercover officer, and the last time we had a serious issue there, I think it was two thousand and eleven, where we made a couple of arrests in a couple of businesses, so they're, they're subject to arrest. It's no longer just a summons or a violation. We'll arrest them for possession or even sale of that class of firework.
Thank you very much.
The state fire marshal's office helps us with that.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Phantom Fireworks on twelve eighty-two Hope Street, based on the recommendations of the town administrator, chief of police, and the fire chief.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I am actually opposed. I know it's state law, and we can't really stop it from being sold completely, but I just don't agree with the state law, and I don't think there's something that should be sold, so. I feel like calls me on his tattoos, you know, on the tattoo parlors, I just will vote no anyway on this.
Similar request by the same petitioner for location at two sixty-one Wood Street, that's item D2.
Well, I think these two issues are about the same, so I would move this one in the same form as the previous motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'm opposed on that, too.
And I was, aye.
Thank you.
The next item is the petition of National Grid in Verizon. This is a joint petition for a pole location on Acacia Road. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and fire chief to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up a more generic issue about these poles and lights. We have a pole on Brindside Street with a light fixture. It hasn't worked for a year and a half, but I'll bet the town is paying for it, whether it works or not. Is this something, town administrator, Tony, you could have somebody survey around town? Because if we have that one, who's saying there isn't a dozen others that they're making us pay for that aren't working?
Actually, that's taking place right now. That's being done, and I'll let deputy, you know, just point out, we have inventoried the lights and check what's working, not working, because with the contemplation that we may go forward to purchase the streetlights.
Well, I think it'd be nice for National Grid to issue a credit now and then if so justified.
I'd like to make that an agenda item if that happens.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that, that we did have a, an Excel sheet, third shift patrol work on that, and National Grid has been pretty good. They do have a liaison, Jacques...
Alfonso.
Alfonso. He's been getting back to us, and they were repairing the lights as we were calling them in, and I can, feel like I can forward that Excel sheet to you.
Would you, would you forward it to all of us? We'd love to see that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Good information, and no, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the National Grid in Verizon petition for the new light pole on Acadia Road, based on the recommendations of the town administrator and fire chief.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back. Walter?
Okay, time to go.
Got to stretch your legs.
Been a little while, yeah.
Also, the, the next item is item F3. F3, this is the petition of Sandra Tally, First Congregational Church fundraising event. They would like to hold their art affair on the fence exhibit August twenty-second with the rain date of August twenty-ninth. This is similar to a activity they've had for the last several years. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
I think it's very inoffensive and probably constructive for those involved, and I would move that we authorize.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is the petition Nancy Dobie, request council consideration for a few moments to speak about the Rhode Island Ocean Tide Senior Games and to present a plaque and update on the program.
My, my colleagues and I were remarking on, we can't believe it's been a year, and we're back here with t-shirts again.
You're putting that up there? It's a perfect size, too. Yeah.
I think you improved your shirt design, Nancy.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nancy, before you start, I wanted to share something with everyone. Walter and the town administrator were at the, bear with me, the Senior Agenda Coalition in Rhode Island Spring Awards luncheon yesterday, and Nancy, that Nancy right there, was awarded for her work with the RI Ocean Tide Senior Games, so nice job. Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Please.
Nancy Dobie, thirty-eight Sullivan Lane, Bristol. Regarding the plaques, I can't believe myself that this is our eighth year.
I know.
And time goes by fast, but we don't get any older. The plaque, first of all, I'd like to present to our town of Bristol, my hometown. I love it here, best place ever. With this, Tony, I'd like you to come forward. There's a little space out there already that will now be refilled. And I want to thank everybody for supporting us. It's so important that we who are seniors are being supported by people in the town for our experiences, our talents, our vocations, our avocations. And this is what keeps us young, this is what keeps us in good spirit, and it's so important to keep moving, as we all know, and to keep laughing, because when you laugh, nothing hurts.
That's right.
And at this time, I'd like to thank everybody on the town council, and our gentleman here, Mr. Socker. Tony, for all that you all have supported in our adventure this year and for many years to follow. I have also... I have the forms. We have two more games. The first one will be track and field, and you can walk. You don't have to run, you can come and participate at your own level of ability and interest. So that's going to be on June twentieth. I will post them up on the wall out there, and then following that, we wind up our season with the golf tournament, which will be out at Trinks. So come and join us and have some fun. I have another presentation. Walter doesn't know about this, but this year, we had our first Ocean Tide Senior Games held at the Quinta Gamble, and it was pickleball. If any of you folks know about pickleball, it's a combination of ping pong, badminton, and tennis, and it's a fantastic game. There's now a group at the Quinta Gamble that has formed, and they've been wonderful to work with. So with that, I'd like to present this award plaque to Walter. He's been taking good care of me all of these years. We're a great team. And going forward, just one more little announcement. We are working on the Bill McCarthy Swim. It's hard to believe this is our fourth year. It will be held on VJ Day weekend on the Saturday, and that is August eighth. So please, put on your speedos, we're going to be a team again, right Nancy?
I, I have to practice.
Oh, that means so do I.
You did a good job last year. I did the best I could.
We had a good time, though.
Count me in, Nancy.
Yeah, wonderful. And so we'll be having three or four categories. We're adding another one. We just had a meeting, oh, two weeks ago, so we want involved every age, all parts of the community. So please mark that on your calendar, and thank you all, and stay happy and healthy.
Nancy, where, Nancy, I just have one question. Where, where's the schedule posted? Is it online? Any web, any, the website?
On, on the website, yes.
Could you just say that website for anybody who's watching?
Oh, sure. R-I-O-T-S dot org, Rhode Island Ocean Tide Senior Games dot org.
Great. Thank you, Nancy.
Or Rhode Island Ocean Tide Senior Games, you can, either way, we'll get you there.
Google.
Thank you so much.
Did I do it? Google everything. I never use that address.
Do you need a receive and file on that, Luke?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to receive and file, and thank Nancy Dobie. Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is petition of Bernice Achevelli, eleven Rock Street, request council consideration for repair of a sewer line. You have late item provided by the superintendent of the Water Pollution Control Department.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Bernice Achevelli, eleven Rock Street.
Thank you.
I want to just give you this.
While you do that, today I reached out to the solicitor to get clarity for this evening, and I know that, Mike, the solicitor, I'd asked him, where do the responsibilities start and end in regards to sewers? And I was wondering, Mike, were you able to get that information?
Yes, the town has an ordinance in its town code with regard to responsibility for lateral sewer lines. A lateral sewer line is defined as beginning at the connection to the main line in the public street and extending to the owner's residence. Any issues with that lateral line are the responsibility of the individual owner of the, the home that the line is connected to.
Okay, so meaning, if you've got the big pipe in the road...
Right.
The small pipe coming out of your home, anywhere, even if it's on-town property?
That's correct. Specifically, it says, the cost of maintenance of lateral sewer lines beginning at the sewer main in the public street and extending to the owner's residence shall be made at the expense of the owner.
And if it's dis...
So it's defined as starting at the sewer main in the street.
So they are responsible for the connection if it becomes disconnected?
If there's a problem with that lateral, and, and this ordinance is, I will tell you, I'm familiar with many other towns, this is similar in every other town in which I've, I've worked with. The lateral is always the responsibility of the owner.
Got you.
But I, I do think that, I don't know if we want to wait and hear the thing, or respond to your...
Definitely want to hear. No, I, I wanted to just get that clarity, so we were, I didn't want to stop, I wanted to hear, because I didn't know, so.
Because, no, I, I wanted to make a comment about that particular aspect, but I can wait until after we hear the presentation, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm coming here, as my petition said to you, is for your consideration and some assistance. This has been going on for a month. It backed up into my basement, which I cleaned. I had my gentleman contractor come over, go into the pipe, and he found no problem with it, although he could not see anything. He was going to come back and take pictures. In the meantime, my brother, Michael Achevelli, advised me to go to the sewer department, in which Mr. De Silva graciously saw me and went out immediately and checked to make sure there wasn't a baggage from the actual sewer pipe in the road, which there wasn't. He kindly offered, he said not to have my person come back, they would take the photographs, which they did. They came and they took the photographs, which I was there for, and they went out to the road, and that's where they saw a separation of my pipe from the main pipe in the road.
When you say photos, do you mean camera inside the pipe?
Cameras, camera inside the pipe.
Okay, thank you.
And I was told by the two gentlemen that were there that it was a separation of my pipe from this main pipe. They also measured the distance, which was approximately twenty-three, no, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four feet, which they subsequently went outside and measured it again from my, where they issued the first line out to the street, and it's out there. You can see it in the pictures I have there. And I asked what I should do from there, and I was told to go to, get a contractor to come in and, and look at it, which I, which I did, and I've attached that information, too. The concern here that I have is the integrity of the existing sewer line. I have been told the integrity is fragile at best. I'm sorry, I'm looking to my son, Jason, he's here with me, and that it was, the sewer department advised, one of the contractors that gave me the quote, that not to try and reattach the separation where it came out, but to go diagonally across, as you will see, I think, on one of the photographs...
Yes, I saw that, yeah.
...out to the manhole cover, which they don't ordinarily allow you to do, but because of what's going on, it's, that pipe in the, in the, in the road was installed in nineteen That's why I'm coming to you. The contractors I've talked to, I've talked to two of them, I've gone by the list that I've got from the sewer department, which has been very difficult, because a lot of people are busy, a lot of people don't want to address the problem because of the age, they told me right out, because of the age of the pipe. I understand my responsibility, but I'm asking the town to help me with their, what I feel is the responsibility of the lack of integrity of our sewer lines. That pipe is from nineteen twelve, and they're afraid, the contractors are afraid, that when they go to touch it, even the one who, who gave the quote, the integrity of the line, they're afraid it's going to crumble. And then what happens? Then what does the bill go to then? You know? And what are they going to hit when they start digging? So this is why I've come to you. I understand the, the zoning, the, the laws and whatnot, but I'm asking for assistance. Mr. De Silva told me, I talked to Mr. Texera, and now I'm coming to you to, for help, for help in that.
Jose, could you speak to the, the concern that was raised in regards to connecting on the, you know, even if it's the same area, different area?
I think one, the contractor you are talking to, he likes to warranty his work, and he, and like I had to suggest it to you also, if you went directly to the sewer manhole, because of the depth of the main there, you could go in, nice pitch, inside the manhole, drop down vertically into the invert, and have it with a new PVC pipe, you want to be attaching or connecting to the pipe itself, because it would be an open invert, and that particular contractor would be able to give you a warranty on the work. To dig into the road and chase the existing pipe, it's, like you said, it's been there a hundred years. There could be cracks in it, technology at the time was clay, so as you're digging, there might be small hairline fractures in that pipe, and you could just be chasing that problem.
And, and that's what I'm afraid of. The responsibility of addressing that kind of fragility and, and the integrity of that, that pipe out there, once they go to it.
I would just like to comment on this whole problem, and I think there's a couple of questions or, or parts of this issue. One of them is, for you to go to the manhole, it looks like it, it's more footage.
Yes, it is.
So that is also, whose cost is that?
That's...
I think there's a very, very serious issue that this raises, and it's not the first time that this has come up, and I, I really think that, you know, at a future council meeting, I'd like to put it on the agenda for maybe two council meetings, I think we need to have some information from our town administrator as what we can do. The infrastructure in downtown Bristol is very, very, very old. Are you talking about, I mean, Jose will tell you, he's told me, he's told me the same thing at, at my house, after many sewer backups. You know, there's only so much you can do. So I think there's, one, an issue when you have to go from the, you know, your property to the, to the road, because in some of these older areas, it's, it's a substantial difference, distance that you're going over, sidewalks, town trees, and everything else in the way. So I think the lateral issue is an issue. Then you're going out to a potentially very... Then you're going out to a potentially very fragile sewer line, and things that are well over, you know, 100 years or more in age. And there's no real relief, there's no matching program, there's no place you can go, it's up to the homeowner, except we're dealing with stuff that's incredibly old. And so it creates, I think, a serious problem for this downtown area. And I think that the infrastructure somehow needs to be addressed, or a plan needs to be in there. We've heard this issue from other people on, you know, Bayview Avenue, I mean, we can go down along the streets. I just think that this is a serious problem, and I don't think it should all be put on the homeowner, because we really don't have a whole lot of say as to like, what's going on in the road. So what cracks our laterals are your town trees. I mean, that's one of the big problems that gets created. If you wanted to take down a tree, the chances are pretty good that we're not, you're not going to get permission to do that. And so people in many parts of town, but I'm talking particularly the town center, many individuals face these problems over and over and over again. I mean, I've talked to other people, and they've talked to me about this, and I'm like, well, you got to go to the town, they'll at least give you like, you know, some money if you had to have, you know, get a sewer backup, they'll give you like $75, go to them. And they're like, so happy just to hear that. But it's not enough if this repeatedly happens to people. So you've got the backup issue, you've got all the town property issue, you've got the laterals, and in this particular case, you've got an extra four, five, six feet, whatever it is, that is, she has to pick up the pieces for, and, so that we can go the manhole, so that she doesn't crack the town pipe. And then if she did crack that, or somebody else did, whose fault is that going to be? Because I don't think that should be on the homeowner if that were to happen, I think that should be on the town, so.
If I could, part of the SRF money that is being spent, a while back, we had to televise all the sewer mains-
Jose, would you give everybody clarity on the, on what you just said?
Okay, state revolving fund money, it's a low interest loan to do big, large capital projects that we apply for, and the state gives us money. We're under the main mandate from the EPA to address the infrastructure. Part of that was to televise all of the sewer mains throughout town, and through that, we were able to identify areas that did need to be addressed, cured in place, dig and replace, so on and so on. If you remember, last year we had bids, and the job has been completed up in the Innawambska area, where the piping was relined with cured in place piping. So as I said, it was televised, and those areas that were identified, had, those that were drastically in need have been addressed. There is a lot more that is on a priority list, just like our road paving, it's a matter of funding.
So in the case of Rock Street, where do we stand on as far as Bernice's issue here with the infrastructure and that pipe? Sorry, hold on.
That pipe there, the main, is approximately 14 feet deep. That depth has allowed it to be cushioned, sort of say, from traffic, it's also not a high-traffic road. It is old, but, and others that aren't as deep have more damage, and that are more heavily used. It's a dead-end road, a dead-end sewer there. So it is in good condition relative to the others in town. What her line has, as it comes out, it's a gentle slope, and then there's a chimney. Because it's 14 feet deep, you don't want to go straight down to that 14-foot depth, so they have a gentle slope, and then as it gets above the main, there's a vertical pipe known as a chimney where it drops in. And, you know, we've offered to the contractors, and we do it again, if they, if she was to hire them, dig to the location that has been shown to be damaged, we would go out there as part of the inspection anyway to inspect the work, but we'd have our camera truck, and we'd be able to see if there is any other damage further along that we couldn't see because of the initial separation. If she chose, like I said, to go to the manhole, if she'd have that gentle slope, maybe be five, six feet deep, and then go a vertical pipe down to the invert.
So Jose, if, if in fact the contractor dug up all the way close to the pipe, and they found that, you found that there was issues there, what would happen at that point in time? If the main was so fragile that you can't connect on, what happens at that point in time?
It wouldn't need to be connected, I mean, to have service at the house. It would be a matter of who, as the ordinance stands, it would be a burden onto the homeowner.
Even if it's our pipe that's broken?
Well, it's the main itself, but our inspection shows that our pipe is fine.
So madam, I'd just like to say to you, you're dealing with a situation which is well-covered by ordinance and practice over many decades. It's absolutely clear that the town is responsible for its large mains in streets. It's also absolutely clear that the homeowner is responsible for the passage of material from the house to your border to the town street, and also continuing on to connect to the appropriate line that's available to you. And we're not going to change that, because it is a fair proposition that if somebody builds a house or owns a house, that person is responsible for it. And supposing we violated that and built this field, how many people you think would come to us asking for the same thing all over Bristol? We just can't have that happen. So I think, while it may not please you, you've got to just abide by the norm and take care of this connection yourself. If there's any problems in the street, the town will take care of those by itself.
My son would like to speak, Jason.
My name's Jason Acavelli. I have a question for you then. Is it standard practice normally to go into a sewer manhole from a residence or dwelling?
There's not, but it has been done in an instance like this.
Due to the integrity of the existing infrastructure then? That's why it's recommended?
Well, we don't know, we've offered this as a possible solution simply because of the depth of the, of the main at 14 feet. She could certainly, you know, connect, and, but we don't know beyond that initial separation if there is any other damage.
Right. So I guess to reply to your comment, we understand what that says, and that that is the homeowner's responsibility to bring the line out to that street, to the connection. What's in question is that connection itself, and the integrity of that pipe. We're not saying this, it's an unknown condition, so we're looking for that type of relief, and not to be all put on the homeowner, if it is going to a town line that's over 100 years old, that's buried 14-plus, whatever his feet, that two people believe that the separation is at that pipe. So what, then the question is, if you do go to that pipe, if you follow this section 22-161, if you do go back to that pipe, what happens with further damage?
Well, I think the answer to your question is that there's a separation of responsibility, but with that, you need to follow the advice of Mr. De Silva about what you do. And once you get your line to the position that he's addressed, it's our responsibility. But I think you need to simplify this by separating the two issues into their legitimate parts. One, that is your responsibility from the residence to the connection, and separate from that entirely, is our responsibility to take care of things from that point on. And I think to muddle that clear and definite distinction is just making a mountain out of a molehill here.
But where is the, but where is the protection, either to Jose or to Mike? If, because everybody here seems to acknowledge that this is a fragile line, and so they can spend more money and go out to the manhole, and hopefully that will fix the problem, or if they went the other route, or if somehow they get to the manhole and something can't be done, and this cracks further, the pipe cracks. Whose responsibility is that, when we are noticed that this is a fragile pipe that has problems? I mean, I feel like it's almost like, like the potholes, like, you know it's there, and so now we have to pay for the car repairs, because we know it's there and we didn't do anything about it. So we know that this is a potential problem, so can there be an agreement upfront that they're going to take care of X, but that anything beyond that, or any other problems that incur, are the town's responsibility?
Go ahead, Jose, I have a question.
Okay. If you, I'm sure you all remember, we had these collapse on Ferry Road, which was clearly the town's fault, the main collapsed, and it also backed up into everybody's home. If, and, if this was the same situation, her neighbors would be having problems, because the main would be having the problem, I should say, the problem would be in the main restricting flow. That is not the case. The flow in the main is, is operating fine. It's, the problem is from that, from the main to their home.
So here's the question, Jose, if they attack, instead of going to the manhole, what if they went to the chimney? And they attached their lateral to the chimney, which is, I guess, the way it is right now?
Correct.
Do you have a concern that if they connect to the chimney, that's going to somehow do something to the integrity of the chimney or the main?
No, I do not. It's the contractors who you've contacted, and they're good, they are concerned, because if you hire them, and then there is a problem, of course, you would go after them. So as one, I'm sure, indicated to you, they would not warranty it, because they don't, of that age of that pipe that they would then be connecting to.
All right, so then it's not a matter of going to the chimney or touching the main line, it's the contractors that are looking at this situation and saying they won't warrant it if it goes in that direction?
Correct.
Now I understand.
But if it does happen, who's liable?
Well, you know, if the contractor goes into our property and does something, destroys it, or somehow compromises its integrity, yeah, it's going to be the person's problem.
But here's, but here's what it says in the letter from Jose. It says here somewhere that they were only, their camera was only able to go out 20 feet from her foundation. It could go no further. So does that mean that you don't really know what's going on beyond the 20 feet? So you really don't know 100% what's-
Well, that's correct, and that's why he's agreed to be there with the contractor, with the television, so that they can continue to televise after the separation, once they dig it up, to see if there's further problem to the main pipe.
Well, you have to understand, we went into the sewer main itself with our robotic camera, and we looked up as far as the light in the camera would allow, up the chimney, we saw no problem. They also went with a push camera into her basement, in the pipe, pushed it out 20-some-odd feet, and could go no further, because there was a pipe separation. And it's also not a straight line out to the main, there is an angle, I believe the connection is 192 feet from the manhole south of your home.
What's this?
That could be the straight line, and you measure that distance to find out where exactly it is. It could be another 10 feet before the chimney, I'm not sure, I wasn't there when they heated-
So Jose, so just for clarity, so we can kind of bring this back in again. The question was, you're there, the contractor comes in, contractor doesn't do anything more until to make sure, you've got your camera there and watch it, you're there supervising the connection, or at least viewing the connection, is that, tell me what happens?
We inspect the installation to make sure it's done properly. You don't want the piping to be backwards, or something obvious like that. But you want to be sure that they're doing the correct job.
I guess, but, and the question's been bandied around a couple of times, if you're, if it looks like it's done correctly, but the pipe fails, that's our responsibility or theirs? You know, if you're looking at it, and it looks like it was done correctly, and the pipe, our pipe fails, the main fails, is this one of those-
If the main itself fails, well then, the owners would be on, I would think, on us.
On the town.
Okay, that's what we were looking for.
So why are you recommending that they go to the manhole and not to this chimney?
Because Ms. Acavelli expressed a concern, of course, and it would be cheaper that way as an option. It doesn't mean she has to, but also, as we just discussed, the contractors themselves would feel much more comfortable, and would offer a warranty by doing so. Because it would be completely new pipe. She herself has gone through with the piping that's in her house, and had it all redone, new piping, nice work, but the piping from the foundation to the main is still the 90-year-old pipe.
I just have one other quick question for you. Is this problem that Bernice has run into common among problems in the, in parts of town, or the downtown area, maybe other parts where the pipes are very old, that contractors are hesitant to do the work because of that, and because of their liability?
It has occurred, but it's also the depth of her lateral, I mean, of the main on that road. Most, most mains are maybe six feet deep.
And this is what?
About 14.
14, okay. Ed, did you want to share something?
I guess my question, Jose, is, so they go out to the original chimney where the failure was, and by the way, I'm very sorry for the ordeal you're going through, and you're absolutely right about our infrastructure. We have brought this up about our infrastructure, along with our roads and our Bristol County Water Authority infrastructure, so we got the trifecta going on. But with that said, if you don't, if you go when this takes place, I'm just thinking, wouldn't you know by just looking at our water main, if the tie-in is even feasible at that point?
It's difficult because of the chimney. The chimney is about, I think, at that location is six or seven feet. So you have the, you have the main here, you have the chimney here, because of the depth of the pipe in, at 14 feet, they came at a gentle slope to that chimney, it dropped down into the main. Their disconnect is somewhere before that chimney. We haven't even gotten there yet. So we, if they choose that route, expose the pipe, we can then camera further, see if there's another separation, another problem, or it might be very, a good pipe, might be in good condition.
So you never saw a separation, you said it's before the chimney, but your camera didn't get that far yet, so it's, so it's-
Didn't get as far as the chimney itself. We were pushing from the basement out towards there.
Sure, sure.
And before we got to the actual chimney, there's a separation.
Right.
And we couldn't push it further.
So it was further than you could see?
Right.
Well, I mean, than your camera could go, so it's, it was more into the street somewhere.
Camera bumped up against the chimney. If it got past that, it should go all the way to the chimney, and possibly down, because it's a push camera, to make that tight corner, may not. But we also were in the sewer main, looking from the main up the chimney, and it appeared fine.
Isn't it less expensive to go the route you're recommending?
It is, because you're not going to be going to the-
So financially, it makes no sense for them to go to the chimney anyhow?
Correct, I would assume.
Plus, they'll get a warranty. If they go to the, the manhole, it's less expensive and they get a warranty.
Yes.
Okay.
No, that was, thank you.
From that particular contract.
So, seeing no one's saying anything, what I'm asking, what I have come to the council for, is assistance on the road part of this. I understand obligations and what is, you know, and my pipe, according to the camera, was fine, that went out. And my concern is once I get out there.
Are you, is your request, so I can understand, is you want the whole main on Rock Street to be replaced?
No.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm not saying that.
No, I'm trying to understand, that if it's the main in front of your house, are you asking, because I don't know either, is it a sleeve that has to, is it a chimney? What has to be replaced?
Once they get out there to fix this, if something goes wrong with the main.
Then I, I think we can answer-
And let's reiterate that. Let's, let's, again, bring this all together. What's been said and what is agreed on, or, I'm sorry, what our ordinance says is that it's your responsibility all the way up into the main. It's a disappointing responsibility, and it's an expensive one, but that is the way the current ordinance is written. In regards to how it connects to the main, was what you've expressed concern, and rightfully so. Jose, our superintendent in water pollution, has said that he will be there, or one of the gentlemen that work there will be there for him, to watch that, be there with the camera, and oversee, in some sense, I don't want to make promises that you can't keep here, but is that, did I, did I say that okay for you?
Contractor would, would be excavating, would get to the location where there is a problem, and they've done it before, they would call for our assistance, we would bring our camera truck. Now that we can get past that location, we'd see further with the camera, and see if there's any indication of there being any other problem with the line.
But as the solicitor brought up, it may be less expensive, maybe less expensive for you to connect on to the manhole cover. So it doesn't sound like we have an objection either way? I haven't heard it, whatever way the homeowner would like to go in this regard is okay?
It would be fine, either, and either way they decided to go.
Okay.
But what I don't understand is, if they got all the way out, like if they decided to go the chimney route, and they got all the way out there, dug all those 14 feet, you know, 14 feet down, and dug the pipe and all that, then they find there's a problem, now what do they do? Because they've already paid- now what do they do? Because they're already paying for all of that excavation.
Well, we know there's certainly a problem in their lateral. Currently, there is no problem in the main. Like I said before, if there was, the neighbors would be experiencing our problem.
But what about the connection? The connection, will they be able to connect?
They will be able to connect. The industries make connections that are feasible for these older pipes. It's commonly done.
So yes, they can. So the question is not whether the main, the lateral is bad. It is. We just don't know where it is. And if, and the issue that you've raised is that if you connect to the main, you will be there to make sure that...
Yes, we inspect it.
That it'll be inspected correctly and hold you harmless if it's the town's responsibility.
They will hold me harmless if something goes wrong and they have to be...
In regards to that connection.
Right. So we bring it, we would, if, we're obviously, I think, we'd probably end up going with the cheaper of the two solutions. So it makes sense, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We don't have a price on both just yet, but maybe it's going to the manhole. I don't know. I looked at the distance. I do this for a living myself, and to go straight out might be easier. Worried about ledge and other things going diagonally to the manhole. It is Rock Street. There's...
They call it that for a reason, right?
So you could open up a whole new can of worms with that. Then once you go, you commit and you're starting to go that direction, now you have two major costs borne by the homeowner, and it's just, it's a little exhausting. So I guess what we're saying is, so if that's found to be the cheaper route to go to the chimney and to go down, and we say, okay, here's where we're at, you take a look at it, and you say, well, you're going to connect, we make the special saddle, whatever it may be, we make the tap, we go in there, and all of a sudden the pipe starts to crumble, or the contractor, whichever one's chosen, who's bondable, insured, and all that other stuff on the list, now we have a problem. Now, everything's open, nothing's connected. Will the town help and take care of this problem? Because we would have met our obligation.
The answer is, you've heard, yes.
Is yes.
Yes. As long as things are done correctly, you're using a contractor that we've suggested, so I should say it, is on our approved list. I apologize. I used the wrong term there.
Right.
Want to be careful with that. But yes, you would be. So, and I think, you know what, why did we take so much time on this subject? Because there are other people like you, and this was worth the time, effort, and energy to understand, unfortunately, where the responsibility of the town starts and stops, and where the residents' responsibility starts and stops. Again, I think we all can understand and appreciate and sympathize where you're coming from, because it can't be inexpensive. I had a problem with my sewer recently, and it's not a joy to deal with. So...
Does the town have any also records to help make a decision between whether it goes to the manhole or not, given the path of travel, on any conditions, topography, ledge, things like that?
What I could suggest to you is that I know Jose would take the time, and certainly Diane and Ed Tanner, we have GIS maps. There might be things that could at least point you in the right direction. There were certain guarantees, but absolutely, we can make those things available to you. I know everybody's wanting to help in this or anything that comes up like this. So...
You do this for a living, but I would imagine the only component that would probably hinder you would be ledge, because anything else could be dig-safed and, you know, wave the red flags for obstacles.
Or any other unsuitable materials, too.
Yeah.
That may come up, you know, or if something happens afterwards, settlement from silt or things like that that may be in that area. You just, you just don't know. You don't know what you don't know, I should say, you know? And that's the scary part, where, you know, that we already do know that there is a line going straight out to a chimney, down. Seems simple enough until we found out all this additional information, which raised this heightened awareness, and which why we came to you for guidance and, you know, assistance. And I know this gentleman's been wonderful in helping and camering it, but we still don't know where it actually is. We know it's into the street more, but that's what's scary about the whole thing. It's the unknowns. And once you get there and it's open, what do you do, you know, at that point? You just throw more and more at it to take care of it.
As the chairman stated, once you do your obligation, at that juncture, you're absolutely right, it's an emergency situation, and the town would have to step in on our obligation and responsibility.
As we always have.
To assume that that project gets done on our end and your end. So...
Well, I hope that that's the accuracy, because what I heard Mike say is only if, or Jose, is only if the main fails. So if there's some problem, that something breaks, I've not heard anybody say that. And that's what I was asking for. I mean, I think they need some agreement that if you're out there and you got all this stuff opened up, and there's some reason that it can't be connected, that you're not going to have to then say, well, sorry, we're not going to go this route any longer. We're going to go the other way, or something like that. I mean, I just feel that there's, what I heard is, we get out to the main, and then something happens, the main collapses, then, yes, it's going to be the town's responsibility, but everything to that point is going to be their responsibility. And as I've stated earlier, I think this is like, this situation I find just so unfair because we're dealing with such old infrastructure. And it is, there are many people that have this situation that will complain to individual council people that don't come to this body. And I really, really think that in general, we need a plan, but we need to answer this question, like, what happens if they get out there and they can't do something?
We have an obligation to provide them with the opportunity to connect to our main. If that chimney or that main starts to crumble, or they cannot connect it to, that's our responsibility, because they've done their job, they've brought it to our line. We've got to be able to provide a way to, whether it's them or anyone else.
Okay.
So that's in the record and in the mix.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. This has been a very...
Exhausting.
Exhausting, as Tony can tell you, excuse you, Mr. Texira can tell you, Mr. DeSova can tell you. I have been at this since April 25th, not washing clothes, not being able to do a lot of things, you know? And I'm, and now, and I can't get contractors because everybody's too busy or they don't want to touch it. And I'm still in that predicament right now, trying to get a timetable to get it done. I'm afraid...
So I think what we'll do is, from what I heard today, is we'll evaluate, and maybe with the help, to look at some sort of maps, what we can in the street, evaluate the two options, go with the most feasible one, make that decision. And then if it happens to be the one in the street, and we go to connect and get back to this chimney, and we find that it's outbound of that, and we'll come back and ask for that assistance that was...
Well, I think you have to come back here. I think it's on record.
It's on record.
They'll be there to do it, and it's going to get fixed.
Okay, take care of it.
Again, thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mr. DeSova. Everyone's been great in helping me. I appreciate it, but I had to go the route.
Well, it's expensive proposition. I mean, $8,500, that's a lot of money to just have to come up with.
And that's only one quote. I don't, you know...
We don't begrudge you the route at all.
No.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Could I have a motion on this?
A motion for what?
To receive and file.
Receive and file, please.
Make a motion to receive and file. Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item are the public service appointments section. You have the Capitol Project Commission and the request of Denise Ashola, 50 Brooks Farm Drive, who would like to be reappointed.
I must recuse myself again.
I would move that we reappoint Denise Ashola to this position.
There's a motion, a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Congratulations.
Next item, item H1, continued from April 8. This was Councilman Stewart's request for an update on the road improvement program.
Before you go on that, I always feel like I should have said before, we appreciate the volunteer spirit that happens here in Bristol. This is not a little bit amount of work, and it's very important to get done. If you're interested in being on board or commission, reach out. If you're not sure what to do, then talk to anybody here or call the town. We'd be more than happy to share what opportunities exist out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The town, and Mr. Strater and myself, did have a brief conversation, and I believe you did have another follow-up meeting with Beta today. And just going forward, we'd just like to brief the residents on the road improvement program that potentially we're going to have a follow-up meeting going ahead with the bids, and going forward with the potential timeline to keep on costs. And if you would like to add anything, Tony, to that, I appreciate it.
Sure, I'll do. But as you pointed out, the bids actually should be going out the first, the latest, the second week of June. There's a couple of things that need to be wrapped up, because they did the soil tests, the other borrowings. And there's a couple streets that we need to look at. Actually, I'm going to be out and about with Kevin to look at drainage and a couple of streets, and how much more work needs to be done there before we put out the bids, so that would be part of it. So that being said, we're moving along pretty nicely, and that should be out and about very soon, so we can begin construction.
Yeah, I just would like that even if there is minuscule changes, that we state the timeline when those bids go out because of the project through the months that have to take place, so we get the project done that we're promising that's going to get done before the winter months, and also within budget. So I think you would agree that if there are any minor changes that be taking place in the next week where it doesn't, you know, deter that first week of June timeline. So...
Actually, once I visit those, we're going to reconvene again, you know, and have a conversation, just to see what it is that we need to tweak, you know, going forward before the bids actually are put together to go out.
Okay.
I would assume you want to continue this. Do you want it to the next meeting, or two meetings out?
I think the next meeting is June...
10. Just the four-week interval.
The next meeting, please.
So there's a motion to continue. It's the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next is from the Director of Community Development. Council will recall, it's earlier discussion about tax stabilization ordinances. The director provides a couple of different options for the councils to consider, and it would be likely the next appropriate action to select one of those and to forward it to the solicitor for drafting.
Well, I'd like to first say that of these two propositions, some of which is the same in each one, I believe that we should adopt the town council vision.
I agree.
We need the advice of the Director of Community Development, but this is such an important fiduciary element that I really believe the council should make a decision.
I concur with Halsey. I was talking with the chairman, and we had a good discussion. It was, it brings out a lot of checks and balances, not only in the tax assessor, but the, you know, the community development sign-off, but also the council's sign-off. I think it's a good way to check. Good balance. And it's, by the way, good job. It's much easier to read.
I tried to get it down to two pages. That was my goal.
From 17, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to reiterate is...
I would make one suggestion, Diane. On the 10-year one, you go from 90 down to zero in 10 years. I wonder if you shouldn't perhaps adopt the same practice for the five-year one, where you go from 80 down to zero in five years. No, that's what I'm suggesting is to cross out the bottom line of the five-year presentation, and in the year five, replace that with zero. That would be more equivalent to the process you have for the 10-year one. Does that make any sense to the council?
Yes.
So thank you, Diane. This was the old ordinance, almost like a book, and she did a great job combining things and downsizing. My opinion on this is, if we were to go with my colleague's suggestion, I actually liked H3A, but just add, when we're other conditions of participation, why not after Section 1, add another line item of H3B, which, let me go to the other one.
I think it was the property owner. Let me see. Basically, you have three sections in 3A.
Right.
Why not take that other paragraph from 3B and just add it, so we're covered on both ends, such as with the procedure? Why make a choice, right? Why not have, one, go to you first, then, two, go to the building official tax assessor, and then, I think it should go to the tax assessor for her to conduct a pre-construction review of the property in order to assess the valuation, because we're dealing with numbers here, and I think the council needs that information, and then add from H3B, it comes to the council, and then back on Section 4, upon completion with your department and the tax assessor. I think by adding those and combining certain paragraphs, it covers everything, you know, so we could get like the best of both worlds. You know what I'm trying to say?
I think so. I think so. So I'm just trying to see where the difference is. So have it go to the tax assessor for the pre-construction review?
And then it would say, the application shall be forwarded to the town clerk for the town council's consideration.
So just reverse the order.
It goes, I think it goes 1, 2, 3 from A.
It would be between 3 and 4.
And then it picks up at, like, on the other one, right? Because that happens, like, I think it goes like 1, 2, 3 from the A, and then it picks up at the council.
So before it would go to the council, we'd add the step for the assessor to go out and do the pre-construction.
Right.
I think we should have those numbers before.
I agree.
Before, because it has an impact on the numbers. And then I just feel, you did a great downsizing, but how about the revocation section of the existing ordinance? Should we protect ourselves in keeping that?
The way I proposed it, I mean, that's up to you. I think I proposed it that it's transferable to new owners, providing, wait, I had to, sorry, I have to look at the council version, that it was transferable to new owners, providing that the taxes do are not delinquent, and that they advise the tax assessor. And if they do become delinquent, then you have the authority to terminate the agreement. So I don't, if you just, I think right now, it's not transferable unless you, I'm not sure if that's the section that you're talking about, but I don't...
Yeah. The revocation is, the town council should terminate an exception granted here under prior to the expiration thereof in the event of fraud or misrepresentation by the applicant regarding any statements or representations contained in the application of the materials provided. But you're saying by your oversight, you're not even going to need that? I'm just...
Well, I think that's a little different than what I was looking at, and that sounds like something that Mike would probably, when he does the legal version of this for the ordinance, that's something. We had talked about some of the caveats that he felt we needed to have in there, and that might be one of them.
That's why I'm asking if there's, like, little subtleties that we want to include just for protection, you know what I mean, and still keep it downsized.
We can put a sentence in there.
We can do that. Sure. I mean, clearly, it says if they don't make the payments, you terminate it, obviously. And I can work with Diane and add a little bit more on the revocation issues.
I appreciate that.
Maybe there's just a section that's called termination.
I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, that with these various ideas, good ideas, that we continue this to the next meeting with the hope that the director and the solicitor would kind of smooth this all up. And I share with what has been said, that I think you've done a wonderful job to simplify this, because the old one was unduly complicated, and this is pretty clear. If you can just sort out these little details, it'll be in good shape.
Thank you.
I did have two more details.
Oh, and I have a question for you, and I have a couple of questions.
Is the number of projects, should we have that still, or should it just be open-ended?
You took my idea.
Well, it's interesting, because I think...
It's just these little subtleties without making another 17 pages?
I know, and I thought of that, because the current ordinance says it's limited to 10, but then the following sentence says, however, the council can change that if they choose to. So it's sort of a number that you have flexibility with.
But we can still have that one sentence in here with the revised, is what I'm saying, to have that flexibility. At least it's, it would be in there.
Are you thinking of 10?
Documented.
I don't think it would need to be in there if you choose the council option, because if you choose the other option, I was thinking that you might want to put a number in. But I mean, if it's truly an economic development tool, then you don't really want it a number. I mean, it depends on the purpose.
I think the number we have should be a matter of policy, because likely, we're not going to have 10 or more. But you know, supposing all of a sudden business boomed, and we had a whole lot of requests at once, I think we should look at each request on its own individual merits towards the well-being and increase for our citizenry. So I don't think you need a quota.
It should be encouraging.
I mean, if we had 17 at once with blossoming jobs all over Bristol, wouldn't we be delighted? But that won't ever happen, but...
Maybe we can speak to that concern and ask the tax assessor, when a new applicant is in front of us, what is currently on the books for tax stabilization? That way, every time we make a decision, we know where we are in the scenarios and how much money is being put up to spend.
And then my last one was multiple buildings on one lot. I believe if that is struck, then that's not a question of viability in the future.
Well, isn't that to differentiate between the building being constructed or modified versus one that is going to have a status quo?
So, right, and so you're looking at, I did add something in here with commercial or industrial condominiums, because that, I think, has come up in the past. So, if you're thinking of a project with multiple buildings.
Treat it as one.
They could get the tax stabilization for the entire project, and then as each building is completed, they would phase in that particular building, so.
But I think with a large organization, we shouldn't tax stabilize the portion being left alone that's already been operating. I think we should address the portion that's being constructed or modified.
It does say that in here, though.
It does.
Right?
Again, I'm just putting these out here before we make a final draft. That way, we can expedite this, so.
Thank you.
Diane, I had just have a few questions.
Okay.
On the, first of all, since we were just talking about condos, on the condo issue, I know we've done it for condos, and I know there's been specific reasons why we've done it, but, you know, number two, it says, shall be business, commercial, resident, and industrial uses, and shall not be for residential uses, and then the next one, number three, is, in the case of commercial industrial condominiums, industrial, so no residential condominiums.
Correct.
Only for business.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just want to be clear about that.
Correct.
And then I was, I think maybe Eddie's caught most of these, but I was just looking between the two, and I'm curious as to, I can see procedures being different, and I can see the intro paragraph being different, but I'm not sure why, for example, under general rules and standards, you had four, four on one, and then the other conditions, the property owner must be, and one of them is number five, and the other one, it goes under, as a number one, under other conditions of participation, I believe. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, and that might have just been a formatting.
Yeah, I mean, I just think, I don't, like, to me, they should be pretty much identical. The body should be identical, except for the procedures, I would think, in the very beginning. I actually support the first one, A, because I don't think this needs to come to the council for everyone if you set up the standards, and I think that if you're going to use it as a real economic development tool, like if we get an economic development officer who is out there looking for businesses, and you want to be competitive with other towns, you're going to want to know, am I going to be able to get this and not have to wait to make, for a council, go through this whole process and have, you know, a council make a decision, and then we might have a discussion, well, we already got ten, do we want this eleventh one? If you really want to go forward in the most expeditious manner, and you want to go move forward with financing, you want to know whether you're going to be qualified for this or not, I think. And that's why I see it as just one of the many tools, and if we have communities that we're competing with that have it as an administrative function, then I think it makes those more attractive, because it becomes more expeditious. And so, that's, you know, that's my thought about it. I think if you set the guidelines very clear as to what they could be, and maybe in that case, you'd set a number, like, you know, X number, and then if we need to go over that number, that cap would then go to the council, I think that would be a way to take a look at it, but I just feel that that would be a better tool than going to the council. But I do agree that this is much simpler to follow than what we've been given in the past, so that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that this matter be continued to the next meeting three weeks, hence, in anticipation of some final revisions by the administration and the solicitor.
Can I have a second for discussion, because I also had a couple of questions.
Second.
Oh, second.
So, we have a second for discussion?
Sure. I just had one suggestion, Diane, but maybe you could just clarify for me. Number three, for other conditions of participation, all transfers must continue to participate, must register, and be approved by the tax assessor. I think I was, maybe it's a suggestion just to make it clear that it's not retroactive, that even though it's, you're in your tax stabilization and you're moving, transferring it, that doesn't mean that that person's going to go back to, you know what I mean, start all over again. It's not retroactive. It kind of continues.
I think that meant if you're selling, if you're transferring the property to a new owner, so the tax stabilization lives with the property, and if you're selling that property.
Still to the owner.
Can the new owner continue that?
Comes in.
Is that, I think that's how I was reading that.
Yeah. Just to suggest, maybe, or maybe that's somewhere that I didn't see, but.
Just verify that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just add?
Needing more solid.
Yeah, just saying that it's not retroactive.
Right. It's not retroactive, but it can be transferred to a new owner.
Correct.
Is what I proposed. Okay.
Perfect.
And then I just had a question, just because I'm not sure if the council saw, if it's in your version, but on B, the five-year program, I think I had, for projects up to or equal, equal to $500,000, but I was thinking you might want a threshold and say between $250,000 and up to $500,000.
Actually, that was my question.
Oh.
I was going to suggest, actually, that we, the way it's worded right now, it says that up to or equal to $500,000 for the five-year program, and then it says for the ten-year program, greater than $500,000. I was thinking that maybe we should allow, right now, we don't have a choice. If it's $501, it has to be the ten-year program.
Right.
And I'm thinking that maybe we should have the option of the five-year program in instances where we believe in a project but don't want to go to the ten years. So, I guess what I'm saying in other ways, leave the opportunity open to use the five-year tax stabilization, even if the property's over $500,000.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that we don't want to have our hands tied too much, and that we need that flexibility in our future decisions.
Right.
And would you like a threshold, so that you don't even get to ask the question unless you're putting in?
Yeah, I think that's good, because $50,000, if somebody wants to invest $50,000, and then, I mean, that's like great, but it's not going to, is it worth a tax, you know, stabilization program? Yeah.
Well, let's talk about that for just one quick second. $250,000, I mean, is that enough for us to say, yes, this is investment into the community, and we want to give a tax stabilization for that? I don't know. I guess maybe we could do this, is that we have a motion and a second to continue this to the next meeting. Maybe you could explore that a little and say that if an investment of X was made, this is potentially the outcomes from it. Obviously, you don't know, but, you know, anecdotally, what we could come up with on that?
Well, you have, you have the information from the report from the other communities that you looked at, right?
Right, I do. Right.
Okay. Thank you so much for all this time, Diane.
Thanks, Diane. This is really great.
Getting there.
You know, Walter, we got to thank Diane at some meetings, too.
But you can charts in there, so that takes more space. So, yeah, you know, it makes it easier to read, and it just.
So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
May I just ask a question, a clarification?
Yes, please.
Is the council expecting to get back an administrative ordinance or a one that requires the council's specific action, or both?
My personal want is the council would okay these, but, Halsey, that was your motion to continue it for the next meeting. Did you have a preference for it? And we can just discuss it out loud here?
Well, my thought was that we've given out some very good ideas, and I think we should rely on the Diane and Mike to sort it all out, and hopefully, we'll get something we can prove next time.
I think everybody except for me was for the council version.
The council, that's what I heard. I thought everyone wanted the council version.
So, there you go.
Well, I actually.
Everyone but me.
I think Mr. Stewart said he preferred A also.
I wanted A, but I took things from B. I'm the one who wants the best of everything, so.
So, it sounds like the answer is it's going to be a hybrid of some kind.
Well, the council was included. I took the council part and added it to.
Well, that's the.
So, to answer the clerk's question, it sounds like it's, the majority wants the council to approve the ultimate decision here. So, that's what we're looking for.
But we will combine. I understand what you'd like to see, some of the elements of the other moved into the council.
And have like two options when we come time to vote. Thank you.
Oh, you want the two options.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
To the council.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Excuse me. The, the next item is from Councilwoman Perella regarding the safety zone for online purchases. This was something that was brought up in a previous meeting, individual council member agenda item.
So, I mean, well, Deputy, I mean, Josh was going to look at it, and he was going to come, said, asked to think about it for a little bit, and I believe at the last meeting, he stated that, that, you know, he always makes those recommendations, but he was going to check, if I'm not mistaken, with other communities that have been doing that. I think I had seen that on the news in relation to Pawtucket Police Department, but I think he said that, if I'm not mistaken, that Tivitan and others already were doing that, and that he was going to look into it further. I don't know if he had the opportunity to do that, or to make a recommendation as to whether that's something that we would, you know, we would go forward with, and you might, you guys might just announce, so.
Yep, nope. It's, it's on. He did look into it. We had several discussions over it. We're behind it 100%. He checked with Pawtucket Police Department, and you're right, they do do it there. It's fairly known, so they've been running it about a month.
Yeah.
And also Tivitan. And it's on, I believe it's on Pawtucket's website. We have a, it's called a e-commerce safe zone. And what it does is it provides a safe place for somebody that's making an online transaction to meet, as, you know, the police department's a fairly safe place, so we, you know, we welcome that, either out in the parking lot or in the lobby. So, yeah, we'll be rolling something out shortly.
Okay.
Be happy to do that.
Yeah, I don't think that we need to take a vote on it. I think it would be great to just do it as a public service and for the police department and the town to announce that they're doing that. I think, you know, that would be awesome, and thank you for, like, doing the research on that.
Okay. But, yeah, we really wouldn't get involved with the transaction at all.
No, right. Absolutely. No. And I think that in all the other sites, that, you know, like, when I've seen it on the news, it's been, that's been made very, very, very clear, that they would not get made in the transaction. It's just that it provides a safe area, that people know they're on, you know, there's surveillance cameras, that they're in a safe place, and I think that's, that's been made abundantly clear in everything I've seen and read in relation to the Pawtucket one.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you. So, I think we could probably receive and file this with hope that the police department will roll something out and announce this in, you know, near future.
So, we have a motion, receive and file. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
The next item is correspondence from Robert Holt, the General Chairman of the Fireman's Memorial Law Fair Committee, and requests council consideration for support of their annual fund drive.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we sponsor what we have in the past. I believe it's a full page. Can someone, so.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
And the funds to be derived from the council contingency.
Yes.
That was an excellent addition to that motion. Thank you.
That's my amended motion.
Good clarification.
And we thank our first responders.
And without any objection from the council, the clerk prepared their ad the last time. We'll do it again.
Absolutely.
It'll probably look very much like the last one.
It may, right? Almost exactly the same, huh?
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, remembers the town council, is something from my office. This has to do with a bill that's before the Senate, which is a little bit of a concern to me, and it's, you know, this is one of those things that when these things pop up by the dozens in the email that I read every day, you pick up on certain parts, and then you go back and read it again, and then you say, oh, my God, there's something else in there, too. But one of the things that was particularly of concern in this bill is that the Senate doesn't seem to take into account the fact that we have many public-appointed bodies that are required to operate under the provisions of the open meetings law, and some of these have, you know, varying degrees of responsibility and of varying interest to the public in general. And one of the things that this bill does is it requires that all public bodies would have to make voice recordings of their meetings, and to also keep those voice recordings forever. And when you consider that, you know, remember that every, think about every board that you appoint, okay? They will all fall into that category. They all have to post their meetings online and per the, you know, the open meetings law, to follow the open meetings law rules, and many of them are staffed by volunteers, and they're going to, and they meet in different places. Someone's going to have to have the responsibility of bringing a tape recorder, to make sure the tape recorder is working, to somehow file the tape afterwards. I think it's becoming an unnecessary burden. I specifically spoke to our own Senator Adiano about this. He did call me. I sent sort of an SOS email saying, please, don't let this go through, and he wasn't really sure as to exactly what the origin of this was, but I did explain that, you know, if it was the idea to have, you know, zoning board, planning board, so be it, if that's, if that was the desire, although I don't see any particular need for it, but nonetheless, that would probably make sense if somebody found the need. But to bring it down to the category of Christmas festival committee and ad hoc committees and committees that have no authority besides making, making recommendations back to a larger body, it just seems like an unbelievably difficult burden of doing these sorts of things.
So, Lou, are you looking for a resolution from the council?
Well, what I would like, if, if the council would so agree, would be to just empower me to send a letter to our senators to indicate that the council finds that it may be unduly onerous, and that they consider it further in terms of how this would affect the overall operation of the volunteer government.
I would move that we, just for discussion, I'd move that we endorse the suggestion that the clerk is empowered to raise those points with the Senate towards a recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
I think we should just make it the legislature in general, in case there's a companion bill in the House, you'd want to send the same.
Yeah, I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah, instead of just letting, limiting it to the Senate at this point.
You okay with that amendment, Halsey?
To, so it would include the House?
Mike, I'd just like to ask you a question also. I thought one of the strangest parts of this was the notion of requiring a recording of executive sessions.
Right, this is going to ask closed meetings.
Seems to me that goes outside of the bounds of practice, because the executive session is meant to be a place where you can be very candid and thereby facilitate coming to a decision for the benefit of the town, and I don't think to have to record that makes any sense at all.
I mean, there is a clause in there that says if the executive session minutes remain sealed, they don't become available, but I agree.
Why have it if it remains sealed?
I, I can't disagree. So, your motion is a good one on all counts.
Yeah.
Well, I think you might want to point that part out specifically, as well as, like, all the, you know, like, the tiny little meeting, you know, groups, and that particular aspect about the closed meetings, because I was wondering about that, too. Oh, my God.
And think about if the equipment does not work, or if it's broken for that meeting, you can't meet, right?
I would, I would expect if you were aware that it was broken, then you couldn't meet. That's correct.
Right. Wow.
So, thank you for bringing this to our attention. It sounds like we're going to vote on this just in a moment, and we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks, Lou.
The, the next item is from the Community Development Department requesting an executive session regarding the acquisition of real property. We'll take that up at the conclusion of the public agenda. The, the next item is item I-4 from the Town Administrator regarding Glory Day's fundraising event, June 5th through 7th.
Thank you very much. My name's Brian Sawyer. I'm, I'm the Director of Operations for the Gloria Gemma Foundation. I also happen to live here in Bristol at 6 Glenview Drive. I do have some handouts that I'd like to hand out.
Come on up.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, thank you.
I'll never have silverware in pink.
All right. Thank, thank you very much. So, so this is a first-time, time event for the Gloria Gemma Foundation happening here in Bristol, June 5th through the 7th. And it's based off of a three-day walk type, type event happening on the grounds of Cold State Park and bordering the Bristol Town Beach. I just want to thank real quick. Walter Burke has been helpful with this, as long as the Chief, Chief of the Fire Department, Chief Martin, and Lieutenant McNally of the Police Department. We would be starting the setup on the Thursday, the 4th. And what happens is it's about 75 walkers will take part in this. It was a $1,500 fundraising minimum that, that we asked for. And it's also includes a camping ground, which is on the, the grounds of Cold State Park. So the, the layout is in the packet that I handed out. But it's a 44-mile walk that on day one will include Bristol, Warren, and Barrington, and will stop in Haynes Park in East Providence. Then on Saturday, just includes Bristol. And then on Sunday is Cold State Park, as long as walking in Bristol. All of the walkers would be walking on the sidewalk and some streets that, that don't have sidewalks. But, but we, we discussed with the police department that they would be walking in, in single files. So our, our main goal is to have people be, people become, be people become aware of, of breast cancer within the area. We have had many events before down here in Bristol as well. And then this is also a, a large fundraiser for the Gloria Gemma Foundation.
How much did you say a team is or a person?
It's a, it's a $1,500 fundraising minimum per person.
And how many people do you have?
Wow, 1,500?
Uh, we're gonna have about, I would say 85 walkers in, in this first.
That's spectacular.
It is, it is. And I, I just want to make note that, that 93 cents of, of, of every dollar from the Gloria Gemma Foundation does stay with local programs for, for, for programs for breast cancer patients, families, and survivors.
It's very fitting, Walter, you wore pink tonight.
That's awesome.
So June 5th through 7th?
It is June 5th through 7th. And we'll, we'll have some, some staffing people down here on, on the 4th as well, June 4th. But, but we will be down there in full force over by the town beach.
Spectacular. This is wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for sharing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion, receive and file?
Support.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I'll give you 100 bucks towards.
Thank you.
The next, the next item is the annual resolution of the Fourth of July Celebration 2015.
Motion to receive and file.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to adopt, okay.
Motion to adopt.
There you go.
Second.
It's a resolution. Any other options? No. Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I'm sure the council would like to sign the resolution.
Gosh, yes.
I mean, it's pretty tight, though. So they all match, yeah.
Will you receive and file that after?
No, you're gonna, you're gonna receive and file it next time after it's signed. You'll get that opportunity. Don't, uh, remember, this is your power. This is, you're, you're making all these decisions, making all these things happen. This is your definite contribution besides the monetary one to the celebration.
It is upon us. The season is upon us.
It is, absolutely.
Kicking off our parade gear on Monday.
A lot of alumni are amongst us.
That's right. That's the, the first parade on Monday, right?
Mm-hmm.
What's next, Lou?
Okay, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, we have some, we have some bids and RFPs. And the, the first one is for bid number 827. This is for the town light landscaping contract. You have one bidder, and this is DePonce Landscaping Services Incorporated of Bristol, the bid amount of $167,300.
I'd move this be conveyed to the town administrator to act in the best interest of the town, with the understanding that in a case like this, you can do some negotiation.
Sure.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next one is the bid number 828. This is for the Geteris School Stormwater retrofit, retrofit project. And you have two bidders. The first is DePonce Landscaping Services of Bristol, the amount of $441,266. And the second is East Coast Landscaping and Construction of Portsmouth, in the amount of $496,935.
Guys, getting slow with your motions. Is there a motion on this one?
Move to give to the Department of Community Development and the Town Administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
They're reading the next ones.
The, the next one is the Professional Auditing Services. This is RFP number 829. You have three proposals submitted. The first is from Promley, Poirier, and Associates of Warwick, in the amount of $40,000 for 2015, $40,000 for 2016, and $40,000 for 2017. You also have the LGC and DLLP of Providence, $40,000 in 2015, $41,000 in 2016, and $42,000 in 2017. And the third is from Ron Bouillier and Company of Portland, Maine, $29,400 for the three years. I will point out that there are other components to these proposals. So obviously, this is, this is not all-encompassing in, in this. This is just kind of the base, base price amount.
I would move that these bids be conveyed to the Town Administrator to act in the best interest of the town, with the understanding that since this is a professional bid, it would not, is not incumbent on us to necessarily take the lowest bidders. Am I right about that?
We have the discretion to award the bid to the most qualified, so. Doesn't necessarily mean that that would be the least expensive.
Second. Can...
Discussion?
Sure. Again, this is just a suggestion. Councilman Herishoff brought up a point about professional services, whether it be ordinating or reevaluation. And again, this is no disrespect to the administration office, but I think sometimes there should be a joint effort in collaboration of when we render a decision in such the magnitude that, on these type of bids. That's just a suggestion I'm putting out there for the future.
For example, I wasn't clear. I apologize.
Well, this is for our ordinating services, just like our reevaluation services. Those, those are large items that have a, a direct impact. And it's not to take away from the administrator, but maybe some of my colleagues and myself might want to input and collaborate on what we see fit, as Michael had said, that you're always not just gonna go with the lowest price. And there might be fact is that maybe we can weigh in on when we make these motions to, to refer.
That's a great point. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item is, let's see, this is bid number 826-2. This is for the Planning Public Health Consulting Services for the Creation of a Health Equity Zone. You have three bids provided. The first from Randy Bolhomer of North Providence, Rhode Island, the amount of $104,000. The next one is from Bonneville Strategies of Bristol, the amount of $52,000. And the third from the Horsley Witten Group of Providence, in the amount of $115,000.
Might I ask how this all came about? This is a new initiative, is it?
This was, and this was actually bid out, and this is rebid, correct?
Yep.
So the first one, we had one bidder, which there's nothing wrong with that. But now we have three.
But I mean, when did we decide to do this?
This was the hard work of, of many people, including Diane and Walter and, and Ed Tanner, to procure the, ba, I'm sorry, the grant. I was drawing a blank on that one. Thank you. And how much was that dollar figure again?
$132,000.
So this was a grant for $132,000.
So this is well within the grant amount, but...
Are you working on the following?
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to move the bid to the Town Administrator and the Director of Parks and Recreation to make the best decision for the town.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item's item K1, and this is the Periodic Report Concerning the Bristol County Water Authority as Provided by Alan Klepper.
This, to me, triggers the need for us to continue to coordinate with our three board members of the Bristol County Water Authority towards not necessarily addressing the matters in this Klepper report, but the overall matter of financial decisions. Because I think we're seeing that the cost of the water goes up astronomically every year now.
Yes, it does.
And we're trying to keep that process going. And I'm not of the opinion that our own representatives are taking enough action to prevent excessive increase in costs.
At our next meeting, Lou?
It's either the next one or the following one. I, I can't remember right off. But, but the, the three directors have all agreed to be present at an upcoming meeting. It may very well be the next one. And, and definitely won't be beyond the one after that. I just didn't happen to write it down. But I do have a confirmation, and I will be also confirming their, their attendance prior to the meeting to make sure that it's, it's gonna happen. But we did have a commitment from all three to be together. And I think the, in conferring with the chairman, he thought it was important that everybody be here together at the same time.
Yes.
And it was difficult to schedule everyone, so that's why we had to push it out so far. Been kind of doing this for about two, three months.
Yes, we have.
To try to get everybody together.
Well, I think that's great, you're able to schedule. And I'd just like to make one further suggestion, though. When you have it all clarified, when it's gonna be and so forth, I'd like to suggest that, under the aegis of the chairman, that we write an agenda for this that enables us to make good use of the meeting and address the most telling elements of the situation.
And also, we could propose what, as you mentioned, through that agenda, propose what questions we have, so that they can be hopefully prepared and knowledgeable about what we want to know.
I might suggest, then, if the council members would like to feed me questions that they would like to include on this agenda, then I can compile it, send it to everyone to just take a peek at, okay, and then forward it to the three individuals.
Spectacular effect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Can I have a motion, receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the, the next two are also executive session items. There is a, a third item. It is not an executive session item from the solicitor, but he suggests we have to have the executive session first.
Yes.
We wanted to be able to do that. So that, that'll be something else that'll be done publicly. And now we're down to the, the M section, the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
Have you gone on Bristol's new website? I don't know if you've taken a moment, but it is really neat. We are still in beta, for those of you who are not familiar with that term. It means that it's a work in progress, but it's a shining example of, of the efforts and energies that were put into that. And I know I've been getting emails. In fact, I got one tonight saying I had a council meeting from the website, because I asked it to send me information. So, updates, information, feedback. Thank God it sent it to me, because I wouldn't have been here.
I was gonna say, you weren't gonna be here?
No, I just, I, I, you know, I wasn't sure. So...
That's awesome.
Take a moment and go on the site, get familiar with it, and give us your feedback. There is a feedback section on the website. You can share information back to us. Go onto it. Try to find something that you know or knew where it was in the old site. See if it's logical to you. And if you see something that's missing, we've made a lot of changes. I'm sorry, they've made a lot of changes in the last few weeks. And, and it continues to be improved. And with your input, everyone's input, we can make it that much better. So, but take a moment and go on and tell us what you think. Next one is, we had a department head leave. Jim Galuska is no longer with us. He was with the town for a long time, and I just wanted to thank him for his hard work and his, you know, all the work that he did and, and his friendship, too. I knew him well and would go to DPW as, as, you know, I'm the DPW liaison. So I just wanted to say thank you, Jim, for the time that you put into the town. We appreciate it. So. Lastly, Councilman Stewart's brought up a couple times about road work that needs to be done. And it is my opinion that this council and the administrator are gonna need to take some next steps in regards to, and actually with the treasurer, too, about what are we gonna do about it? Whether there are bonds for our next ballot, and how do we pay for those? As you've heard us talk about, there's money to be saved with LED. And if we can save money with LED and use that savings to pay for a bond, there's money to be saved in so many sections. And hopefully, we can save the money and then cover the cost of the yearly payment on the bond, so we can do the work that is just so necessary. We spent a good 20, 30 minutes talking about a sewer line. And I think that's indicative of some larger issues. And again, Councilman Stewart's brought this up many times. And I think we all are sharing of this, is that there's infrastructure improvements that need to be done. But we need to take steps to do that. And I think we will over the next course. I said last thing, but one more than the last one. We had a couple of ordinances tonight. And I've reached out to the administrator and departments and department heads, saying, what do you need us to look at? What are, what are the ordinances that need to be changed? Lou brought to our attention, working with him about moving our deadline for council meetings. And why do that? Because this council meeting is the culmination of three weeks' worth of hard work by a lot of people. So the decisions are made from the information that we get. There's a lot of things that happen in the town. An example is that when road work is done in the town, we don't really have anything that speaks to the compaction of a patch and how it's supposed to be brought up to a certain level. And that ordinance could be changed, so it would mimic the state's ordinance or level of requirements. And as it gets better and it changes, we don't have to keep changing the ordinance. It'll just stay up to speed. So when, I'm not gonna pick on National Grid particularly, but for my example, when they cut open the road, that road should be brought up to a place that is, is exactly how it was before they cut it up. It should be smooth and flat, and it shouldn't fall in after two, three, four months. Obviously, there's a little settle time, and they have to go back. But I'm talking about a year down the road. So there's a lot of things, is my point, that we can review and introspectively say, what can we change? What can we do to, to do our jobs better, which is serving the community. So we want to be able to, if we can save money by changing some ordinance and, and make our jobs easier, so we can spend our time, efforts, and energies on the things that are important. That's what I really want to focus on this time, as you've heard. So, thank you.
Mr. Swinney.
Councilman, Chairman, you've mentioned the LED lighting, which I'm so pleased you did, because I was talking to Walter Burke, and it looks like we're moving forward, and it's going well. And it looks like we're going to save quite a bit of money, which is going to be great. The, the dollar figures aren't in. But I love that this team, this council, we just don't talk. We take action to, taking steps to help lower the taxes. And this is a good way to do it. I mean, this is good steps. So we freeze up money to do other things, like, Councilman Stewart's, you always talk about the roads and other projects that the other, my other colleagues are very passionate about. Number two, I just wanted to mention that we had a very productive workshop on recycling this past Monday. And to many of the residents in Bristol, we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to take our trash to the Johnston landfill. And we need to understand that the, to drive those costs down, so we can save more tax dollars, so that could go to the schools and other valuable projects we need to continue to recycle. So I'm gonna leave you with a recycling tip tonight to educate, keep education at the top of the, the list here. Those pizza boxes, those oily pizza boxes, the bottom, that's oily. Make sure you put that in the trash. But the top of that box, that's not oily, that is recyclable. So there's, there's a tip for your takeaway. But let's just keep working on the recycling. Let's get those rates up. It brings more money into the town. It's better for the environment, and it's driving down costs. So it's key. And lastly, I just want to let you all know about the British Motor Car Festival, which most of you guys are all pretty much aware about. But I just wanted to let you know, it's coming up on Friday, June 12th, and it's running till Sunday, June 14th. I won't go into all the details. You can go get those at the Explore Bristol website.
But I will. The Newport Harbor Guide, the administrator gave that to me, if you...
Your effort.
Yeah, Newport Harbor Guide. I'm gonna open this up. As you can see, it's a wonderful article that shows some past years of the British Motor Car Festival. And there's another ad. I don't know if you can see that, Mike. I'm probably moving it along too fast here. But a lot of, again, a lot of efforts, a lot of volunteerism. And these efforts go a long way to bring new people into the community. And not only new people, but the people that are already here to get to enjoy this, too. So, and as we've talked about so many times, we are so proud of Bristol. When we all go to other communities and we talk to other people, they say, oh, you live in Bristol.
Yeah.
And, and we all live in Bristol. It's a wonderful place. So, thank you.
So it's a good economic development event. So I'm proud, proud to say we're doing it. So, that's it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Ms. Pirella.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I would just like to express my condolences on the passing of Joyce Simos. Joyce is a very active member at Our Lady of Mount Carmel and, and in the community. And she is the wife of our... not only to them, but to her children and to her sisters and other siblings on her passing. I think it was, I believe it was very, pretty sudden, and I'm very sorry to hear that, and I know that my colleagues would join with us in expressing condolences to the family.
Thank you.
And so, and the other thing I have is, when we're talking about poles, as I was coming home today, I noticed on Hope Street that pole at the corner of Washington, and yes, I was thinking of Halsey's flagpole. I'm talking about the actual pole, it's Washington and Hope Street. It is really leaning into the, you know, towards the building at Barretto's, so I don't know.
It's going to be replaced next Wednesday.
Okay, yeah, that's, hope we don't get a strong wind off the water. I think it might go down if that were the case.
One did on Thames Street not too long ago.
Yeah. Then also to wish, you know, to remember our veterans and Memorial Day, which is this weekend coming up, in Monday, and we will have our annual Memorial Day Parade. What is that? I think it steps off from the cemetery at 10:00, and it will come down here. So there'll be a speaking program, I believe at 9:00 at North Burial Ground Parade, and then that will be followed by another short program here at the Veterans Memorial Garden. And so I hope people will be able to come out and join us for that. It's also this weekend kicks off the Portuguese Festivals, which is the Feast of the Holy Ghost. So if people are available and looking for some, you know, nice Portuguese food, they can certainly go, I think, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday over to St. Elizabeth's Church. And so with that, and then I just wanted to do one last minute on the infrastructure. I do really think that we need to come up with a plan. I was serious about that, Tony is passing that on to you and maybe coming back with what we can look at, because we know that we have serious infrastructure problems in town. But we continuously hear about these that deal with pipes that are very, very old, made out of clay, and creates very large burdens for our, many of our taxpayers, and we have to figure out something that we can do, whether there's a program, a matching program, a low-interest loan program, something, because you just find out that you need to find $10,000 and fix something tomorrow, and, you know, when, for years, you've been struggling with those tree limbs, or whatever the case may be, I think that we need to look at that. I really do. And I know that you probably know that, because I'm sure you've heard over the years, the same complaints that I've heard and the same issues that have been raised by many of our citizens. So I just wanted to bring that up one more time. So with that, I think that I'm pretty much set. So, thank you.
Mr. Stewart.
It makes it that much easier, and we could go a little quicker when my colleagues bring out some great points, but also I'd like to extend my condolences to the Simos family and the Squartrito family. And also, Councilman Chairman had brought up our Director of Public Works, Jim Goluska, of his many years of service, and his input, I would ask our town clerk if he can just write up a thank you for his many years of service on behalf of the town council, and thank you.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
Also, this past Saturday, we never get tired of acknowledging our young that ascertain the rank of Eagle Scout. And once again, we attended a ceremony, my colleagues and myself, for Connor McMullins. So Connor, we wish you the best going forward, and congratulations. And 4th of July is upon us, the events are upon us, like the British Car Show. There's going to be a lot to do, just be safe. Also, on Sunday, June 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00, at the Mahope Farm, will be the 2015 Golden Pheasant Award that will be given to Joe Barretto Jr., and it's the Farm-to-Table Feast, which is its second annual. Last year, I got to attend, my wife and some of us also attended, and it was a great event and contributions by you all, and I think it's going to be even better this year. A lot of hard work goes into it. With that said, I can't wait to hear Halsey's first...
Shakespeare quote?
Little George Washington quote.
George Washington's.
So I'd like to thank Mike Davis, thank Sergeant Arms Archie, and everybody who came out tonight, everyone watching at home. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Harrisaw.
Well, first of all, I'd like to compliment Councilor Perella. I appreciate very much, Mary, your emphasis on proper flagpoles and proper flags, because I think the fact we have all these flagpoles and we generally are pretty good about keeping the flags up is a very important element in the promotion of the Bristol patriotism. And maybe when we promote patriotism, we also promote good feelings and good character. So I think it's so important that we appreciate that that's all being done. Secondly, I'd like to make further mention about Charlie Enright. You know, one of the most famous things in yacht racing, probably the most famous thing in yacht racing this year, is the Volvo Around the World Race, which began last fall in Alicante, Spain, and has had a number of segments in a total passage which will be around something a little in excess of 30,000 miles of sailing. And this time, for the first time, this was done in one design boat. Seven started, one got wrecked, and by the way, in that instance, in very difficult circumstances in the Southern Ocean, the one boat that stood by to rescue the poor souls who put their boat onto the rocks was Charlie Enright and his boat. And of course, that's the rule of the sea, that when there's a tragedy and there's need for semen rescue, the rule is that you drop everything else. It doesn't matter whether you're in a race or whatever you're doing, you go and help the people in need, much as when the Titanic sank, it was all rescue. So Charlie and his crew stood by, and they got quite suitable praise for it. In fact, they got an award from the, one of the American yachting organizations, the Stone Friesel Club, for what they did. But further than that, there's only one American boat in this race, because the boats come from all over the world, and that one boat is the one that our Bristol resident from Burton Street, Charlie Enright, is the organizer and skipper of. He's not winning, but he has had spirits of winning elements of the competition. I'm not sure he has the same sponsor for next time, but I would say to you, my prediction is that if he's able to do it again after the learning curve of this sail around the world, we might have a winner from Bristol, which is the way we want to have it, and I hope that might happen in three years from now. I watched the departure on Sunday from Newport, and it was very interesting. One of the interesting things that, to me particularly, was that when we sail in Newport, we all know that at the beginning of a race, you should immediately tack and go to the west, because when you get over to the Jamestown shore, the wind shifts, and you come off of there with a big lift. This was done by one of the foreigners that came here. He tacked immediately, went over to Jamestown, he tacked, and sailing toward where I was watching, he was sailing five or seven degrees higher. He got ahead and he won the race. That was the whole race, just that first part. Well, that's something that Charlie knows as well as I do, but somehow he got a little buried and didn't have a chance to take advantage of that particular thing. But the future for him is great, and let's hope he does well. Well, now, as Councilman Stewart has referred to, I warned you at the last meeting...
War dust.
...I was going to give you one or two elements of George Washington's Rules of Civility and Decent Behavior in Company and Conversation. And I'll repeat the fact that he put this together prior to his 16th birthday. He didn't author all of them, but he authored parts of it, and he recorded all of it, about 100 and some elements of it, right? So I'm going to give you three with your indulgence. Number one is, every action done in company ought to be with some sign of respect to those that are present. I think we follow that almost always, under the leadership of our good chairman, and I think we do that. But it's interesting that one Frenchman who met General Washington during the Revolutionary War remarked, "I have never seen anyone who was more natural and spontaneously polite." So Washington clearly followed his own precepts. Another one is, which I find somewhat amusing, number six, sleep not when others speak. Sit not when others stand. Speak not when you should hold your peace. Walk not on when others stop. Well, I think we pretty much abide by that one, as far as I know. And the third one for this week is rule number seven.
We were supposed to have two, sir.
Well, I'm going to tell you to do one extra one, because I think it's very important for you to know this third one.
It's 101, so we got a lot of...
George Washington says, "Put not off your clothes in the presence of others; nor go out your chamber half-dressed." I don't know whether we obey that or not, but perhaps we do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one quick comment? I just...
Not about the last one, right?
No, 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 no. But when Halsey was talking about the Volvo race, and there's no one that would know that more than he would, I don't usually read the sports section, only if there's some drama going on in sports. But I don't, if the article was in the sports section, if it was in the regular section of the paper, but, you know, when we're in our community, we sometimes take things for granted, and I was mentioning this to Halsey the other night, that I saw they were recapping their warm welcome, all the racers, in Newport, and how wonderful it was to be in a city that understood sailing and that was really welcoming to them, and how smaller cities, you know, if they were, if they were in a big city, they would be lost in the shuffle, and nobody would really care that they were there. And one of them, I believe he was like the skipper of the, a boat from, a ship, well, a boat from the, I think a Scandinavian country, but I'm not sure, was quoted as saying to his crew, "Make sure you go to the Harrisaw Marine Museum. Make sure you, make sure you get there and see that." So I just thought that was, wow, I went back and I read it again. I said, that's really, what an international reputation you and your family have, Halsey, and it's wonderful that, you know, we have that heritage here in our, in our community and that others from very distant lands recognize that. So I just wanted to make comment of that.
I was so excited to hear Halsey that I forgot to mention that the Harrisaw Museum, back before the hazard mitigation meeting back on the 11th, what a crowd that it couldn't be held in the museum, they had to go out to the tent, and I got to hear Charlie give his presentation, and the, just the reception of the people that showed up for that presentation was overwhelming. So I'm just glad that he got that warm greeting from the town of Bristol.
Well, I thank you both for that, and I would say to you that we're going to strive to keep it rolling.
Town Administrator, action items?
The first item, just to remind folks that the town hall will be closed on Monday. It'll be Memorial Day, but come out and, you know, let's see, salute all the folks. They'll be marching the parade, and also, let's not forget the cause as to why we celebrate Memorial Day. Also, graduation is upon us. The high school graduation will be Saturday, June 6th, and awards night will be Wednesday, June 4th. So with that being said, good night. Thank you.
We are going to convene to executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 4246-5A2 litigation, Bristol Warren Regional School District, and 4246-5A5 relative to lease and acquisition of real property for public purposes. That also covers Diane's request.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you all.